I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is July 29th, and we'll begin with our public statement read today by Commissioner Giffens, please.
Thank you.
We, the Monroe County Board of -- You're muted. Not sure why.
No? Not a -- Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I guess Julie can't hear you.
I hear Penny.
Okay. It's Julie. Somebody send her a message in chat, maybe?
Julie, you can't hear?
She needs to turn her volume up, I guess. Okay.
Can we help her out? Are we good?
Julie, I don't think you can hear any of us. I'm gonna send you to the --
I can, actually. I couldn't hear her.
Oh.
Okay. So it sounds like we're back. I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay.
I couldn't hear her, but I could hear everyone else.
Okay, well.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
We'll start again. Okay. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. We will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC."
Thank you, Commissioner Giffens, and I will note that we have we are joined today by the full board, although I don't see Lee Jones on anymore. Am I missing her? Well, I think we should continue, at least with our department updates, and see if we can get her back. I don't know if you have her cell number, TSD, but it would be great if, or Angie, if you could contact her. That would be lovely. So we'll go ahead to departmental updates, and we'll begin with the Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. I just really want to start, I have just a couple of things to kind of go over. I wanted to give an update on where we are with the online complaint form and the exemption application forms. So those will be up, they're on target to be up on Friday. I do anticipate we'll probably have a few hiccups here and there, since it's a new system for us, so I would say please be patient with us. But those should be up. We are finalizing the forms and the process, and I think that that will be up and ready on Friday. Our initial staff, we've got a couple of people assigned to that that have been working on development of that with our technical services department. They will kind of test that process out, and then they'll be, we'll be doing training for the additional staff that we're bringing on. So we'll have an opportunity to kind of try it out, see what works, what doesn't. So when those new folks start, that we have that process a little more solidified and working. I anticipate that over the next month or so, that we'll continually be reassessing it and making adaptations to make sure the process is running smoothly. But those should be up on Friday. So primarily, there will be an online complaint system. There will be a hotline number, and they'll connect with that. So the best way to file a complaint, and really, we are talking about complaints about non-compliant businesses who are, you know, not following whatever the requirements are for that business, whether it's distancing, or face coverings, or what have you. So people can go in and fill out that form, so we know what happened, when it happened. We have all of those details, and we can follow up with that. The application for an exemption on the gathering size is much the same. Somebody will have to take responsibility for that event, for that occurrence, for that exception, so that they're ensuring that all the protocols and procedures they say are going to happen actually are followed. And so we'll need that responsible party. And then we are finalizing sort of what that process is for those approvals or denials. Certainly, we can work with somebody, we'll let them know if there's a reason that it wasn't approved, why that was. We do anticipate there could be times in our community, based on community spread and other things that are going on, that we may not be able to allow larger-sized gatherings than what are already allowed. So that could happen based on circumstances, and that may change as time goes by. So just keep that in mind. Again, we'll be reviewing those processes, but all of that should be up by Friday. So people who've asked, or have things coming up in the next few weeks, could go ahead and by Friday, or I would say by Monday, the latest they can have those submitted, and we'll be starting to look at those and reviewing those. That's been taking up a lot of our time. And just kind of in talking about that, I want to say thank you to the commissioners for using some of the CARES funds to add those additional part-time staff to help us out. And for the public, and, you know, we have 14 full-time equivalents in the Health Fund, excluding the Health Officer, who are in the office daily, who are paid kind of through your taxes and service fees. We have an additional about eight and a half positions right now that are grant-funded. And so those grants don't necessarily allow people to work on things outside of the grant. So we're very limited with those things. So we are operating on a very small staff to handle a lot of different things. So adding those additional four people that are each part-time, I think it will come out to about two and a half full-time equivalents to help us with these new processes is a huge help, and we want to thank you for that opportunity. And the other thing that we're working on, I know that testing is always a concern, so we are looking at some opportunities and how we might be able to ensure that we have testing throughout the fall and winter. And I think that's it.
Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Questions or comments from either of the commissioners?
No? Can you hear me at all?
Yes. We can.
Do I sound normal?
It's a little broken up.
I have a very, very weak connection. Glad you're here. No, I don't have any questions. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Did you have any, Commissioner Giffens?
No. I did want to bring up the fact that it looks like the schools are changing what they're gonna do, based upon the health situation right now.
Yeah. And I do, I'm so glad you raised the issue of how understaffed the department is, and how much you've been able to accomplish, is nothing short of miraculous, and it's just, it demonstrates your commitment to the public. We so appreciate everybody's time and effort, and it's been a lot, and we know that it's been a lot of work. And just to highlight something, the complaint forms are not to, not for the public to file a complaint about an individual that they see somewhere without a face covering on, correct? This is not about individuals.
Correct. And even in our regulation, it is very definitive that the regulation does not give individuals the right to harass or intimidate others who may not be voluntarily complying.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate you and your hard work. Thank you so much for that. Excellent. And next, we have Emergency Management.
I think Allison's out. Is Kate on?
I saw Emergency Management listed on the chat line.
There she is.
There she is. Hello.
Hi, I'm Kate Petroline. I am the Deputy Director of Emergency Management. I am sitting in for Allison today, because she's taking some much-needed time off. So just a change of face today. I have two updates from our office. They will pretty much be marrying what Allison discussed last week. First off, just to remind everyone that there's a blood drive coming up on August 24th. It will be at the Monroe County Convention Center. It will be by appointment only, and they are doing the antibody testing. As of this morning, I did not see it posted on the website yet, but continue to go to redcross.org and check in periodically. They are filling up quickly, so hopefully you'll catch it right when it opens. And secondly, I'm just gonna remind everyone that if you are still in need of a face covering, Monroe County Government has given face coverings to various organizations across the county, and they can be picked up by appointment only, because some of these facilities are still operating in that capacity. We ask that you give them a call between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And the phone numbers and addresses will be found on the Monroe County website. I know that you can find it real quick in that breaking news section right on the front, so that should be plain and easy to find. I'll go ahead and go through the list. So just to start off, our county offices that are providing face coverings, be the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, they're at the courthouse, the Monroe County Health Department, and then our office, Monroe County Emergency Management. Fire departments that are offering face coverings, you can pick one up at Bean Blossom Township Fire Department, Station 6, Benton Township Fire Department, Station 14, Bloomington Fire Department, Stations 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, Northern Monroe Fire Protection Territory, Station 25, Ellisville Fire Department, Station 71, Monroe Fire Protection District, Station 22, and Van Buren Township Fire Department, Station 29. And as for our trustees' offices, you can pick up a face covering at Bean Blossom Township, Benton Township, Clear Creek Township, Indian Creek Township, Perry Township, Richland Township, Salt Creek Township, and Van Buren Township. And again, you can find all those addresses and phone numbers on our county website, county, excuse me, co-monroe.in.us. And that's all I have.
Julie, you're muted.
Sorry. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I still wonder when we're gonna have to buy Emergency Management a new vehicle because of all the driving around that they've been doing to deliver things and pick up things and keep everybody --
I've been seeing a lot of the county, for sure.
That's true. And just a note on that is, the face coverings, both face masks and shields are available at the County Courthouse North Door, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 9:00 to 4:00. So that's, yeah, so great. Thank you so much, and thanks for joining us today, Ms. Petroline.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Is Ms. Ridge available to offer the traffic and road update?
I have not seen Ms. Ridge's number anywhere.
All right. Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda, limited to three minutes per person. If you could, Ms. Dayton, if you could let folks know what tone they will hear when they have 30 seconds left to speak? Great. Thank you. So when you hear that, you have 30 seconds left. So does anyone have any public comment to offer for items that are not on our agenda?
Looks like first up is Jenna Arthur.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Arthur, welcome.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm going to use my three minutes to lend my voice to Black voices and amplify them, so I am currently looking for the piece that I'm going to read. Okay, so after the national events in our community, as well as nationwide, Black Lives Matter Bloomington has asked elected officials to complete their anti-racist training. In a fairly standard move, the City Council and Mayor's Office denounced the incidences using platitudes of support and sadness. BLM B-Town and the community put pressure on them at the demonstrations and in an online campaign in an anti-racist policy training that BLM B-Town had created. The creation of this training was born from a request for help from City Council members. BLM B-Town also extended the offer of anti-racist policy training to the Monroe County Council and Monroe County Commissioners after conversations with certain county councilors indicated the need for such a training as well. Due to this pressure, the City Council and Mayor's Office have expressed commitments to participate in, quote, "some sort," end quote, of anti-racist policy training to make Bloomington safe, civil, and just. The problem is that since the rise of the BLM as a movement, there has been an explosion of opportunists eager to profit by offering anti-racism workshops, which give politicians a gold star, but yield no substantive change in terms of how officials approach policymaking. The burgeoning anti-racist training industry operates like a degree mill online. Universities offer cut-rate credentials but no actual education. Many of the police guilty of the recent murders of unarmed Black people have taken those type of workshops. We need our city and county officials to participate in real anti-racist training, not a perfunctory workshop that produces no substantive changes. This is why BLM B-Town created our workshop to address local needs and locate changes in current policies. Bloomington has a habit of hiring or working with outside consultants who are unfamiliar with our community. In fact, their motivation may have been the opposite. If things stay bad, they can come back in another five years, do another study. As Bloomingtonians, we have an obligation to ensure our elected officials are trained in anti-racist policymaking that specifically targets local issues from the perspective of progressive Black community members. This means the training should be focused on specific policies made by our legislative bodies that have that have caused disproportionate harm to our BIPOC communities. It should come from the people who live here and are thus motivated to hold officials accountable. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur. We appreciate you.
Next up is Nathan Muchler.
Thank you. Mr. Muchler, welcome.
Good morning. Like Jenna, I am here to encourage this body to take seriously anti-racism training. I would urge you to take an anti-racist policy training that is specific to Bloomington and Monroe County, is directed by members of the Bloomington and Monroe County community, is focused specifically on anti-racist policymaking rather than general implicit bias training, carries a component of local accountability, is led by diverse Black progressives from the community, rooted in the Black Lives Matter ethos of dismantling anti-Black white supremacy. Speaking for myself, I started anti-racist training for myself and anti-racist understanding later in my life than I wish I had. So this is new to me, and anti-racist training makes me uncomfortable, and it should make me uncomfortable. And it's good that it makes me uncomfortable, and it's hard, because every bit of work that we do today now prevents tragedy, prevents oppression in the future. And I have utter faith, despite all our differences and disagreements on particular matters in this community, that when tragedy strikes, we will rise to the occasion and embrace the opportunity. It would be very tragic, it would be very uncomfortable, it would be very awkward to have to do this training if we wait too long. So I encourage everyone to take a personal accountability and an accountability as an elected official or representative of this community to make it a personal and official goal to find a way to take this training that, again, is specific to Bloomington and Monroe County, again, is directed by members of the Bloomington and Monroe County community, again, is focused specifically on anti-racist policymaking rather than general implicit bias training, again, carries a component of local accountability, again, is led by diverse Black progressives from the community, and again, is rooted in the Black Lives Matter ethos of dismantling the anti-Black white supremacy. I have every confidence that Bloomington and Monroe County can be a leader, not just in our community, or our state, but even in our nation, if we embrace our potential, whole strength of the convictions that I trust we have. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. We appreciate you. Anyone else to offer a public comment on items not on our agenda?
There are no other hands raised.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. We appreciate your hard work. All right. With that, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Move approval of minutes for July 22nd, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Edits? Okay. Well, all right. Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on approval of minutes, July 22nd, 2020?
I would be happy to. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
And Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Great. The motion, the minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Freeman, for your hard work. Next item, please.
Approval of the claim docket, accounts payable, July 29th, 2020, and payroll, July 31st, 2020.
I'm sorry. I'm waiting for Mr. Miller, waiting for him to start.
You nodded, and I wasn't sure. All right. I thought you, I was having speaker problems again. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Miller, tell us all about it, please.
Good afternoon. The total for claims was $443,574.87. $128,050 was for Aztec Engineering Group. $34,064.23 was for E&amp;B Paving, and $31,253.50 was for Century Service Corporation. As far as payroll, the total was $1,593,323.54. Approximately 70% were for the direct payroll costs, and approximately 30% were for the payroll-related claims.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on accounts payable, July 29th, 2020, and payroll, July 31st, 2020?
Sure will. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Great. Accounts payable and payroll are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. I will note that we have received a report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court, and that is the report from June 2020, and we received the report from Ways and Measures running from the time period of June 16th through July 15th of 2020. And we'll now move on to new business.
Move to approve ratification of Indiana State Department of Health Immunization Agreement. Fund name: Immunization. Fund number: 8138. In the amount of $60,008.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second, Ms. Cottle.
Good morning again. Thank you. This is a renewal, it's a grant renewal that we signed, we get each year in varying amounts of money. As you know, I think that Monroe County has a very high rate of vaccinations in comparison to other counties across the state, but certainly COVID has reduced vaccination vaccination rates overall, and then with the stay-at-home orders, there are many people who weren't able to keep up to date. So I think that this money is even more important than it usually is, and it allows us to ensure that vaccines are available for children regardless of their ability to pay for them.
That's awesome work. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just that I'm very pleased that Monroe County has such a high rate of vaccination, especially at a time like this, and I hope we can keep it like that.
Yes, we do too, and we know that, you know, rates, people missed vaccinations, so we definitely are trying to do everything we can to catch people up and ensure that they stay up to date with them.
Great. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
I was just gonna ask, I know last year, when this grant money came through, you said that one of the venues where you're able to do some of the vaccination is at the schools, with that not, schools taking a different path this fall? How will that be approached?
Yes, we, so this money does go to our public health clinic that does our immunizations. That's a partnership with IU Health, and school clinics will be more difficult, and we'll be trying to find alternate ways to get people in, and we'll have to evaluate as we go through the year and what school looks like and how we'll do that.
Yeah.
Everything's a work in progress.
Yeah, I imagine that there's going to be a lot of last-minute changes here, but I'm so glad that we received this grant and will be working on this very important project. So thank you so much to the Health Department for that, and to the schools in advance for working to organize it, however it may be. Is there any public comment on this agenda item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Seeing none, we'll come back to the board. Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on ratification of the Indiana State Department of Health Immunization Agreement, please?
Will Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cottle. We appreciate you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Davie Resource Group agreement regarding the 29 Community and Urban Forestry Assistance Grant. Fund name: Community and Urban Forestry. Fund number: 8179. In the amount of $20,000.
Second. Right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Robertson? You heard from the Parks Board?
Yes.
Or from the Parks Department, sorry.
Can you see me?
We can. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Hey, good afternoon. Yeah, so what we have is a service agreement with Davie Resource Group to conduct a hazard tree inventory and to develop a tree management plan for our greenways and a couple of our park trails. This is in relation to our Community and Urban Forestry Assistance Grant, given to us through the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. So if you have any questions regarding the service agreement, I'm happy to answer, but it's fairly straightforward.
Sounds good. Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes. I assume that this grant leads to the removal of trees that are considered to be a hazard. And I, go ahead.
That's correct. So what Davie will do is they'll conduct an inventory of trees and their different phases of what they would consider to be hazardous. So some of them are gonna be, need to be removed sooner than others, and that's where the management plan that they'll be developing will give us an idea of what needs to be removed when. So they won't be removing the trees necessarily, but they'll give us a detailed plan, as well as a compilation of all the data in a viewable format that'll make it much easier for us to plan to remove the trees in the future.
Thank you. Maybe this isn't exactly relevant to what we're considering right now, but I am curious what happens to the trees that have been removed, and in particular, trees that don't end up blocking a path or being a hazard to one.
You know, I don't know that I have the answer to that. I can certainly get that answer to you, but our park staff, as far as where they take it, I would have to confirm with them and get back to you.
The reason I asked about this is because one of the ways that forests replenish their nutrients is from allowing dead vegetation to act nutrients is from allowing dead vegetation to actually decompose. So when trees are removed entirely, that's depriving the forest of some of its nutrients.
Mm-hmm. And, and that's something that we would work with Davy too, with while, again, they're, they're not removing the trees. We've got an arborist on staff, and they're all certified arborists as well, so removing the trees in a proper manner is something that certainly they would be working with us on as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
It's also my understanding that Mr. French, who is the arborist now on staff, that he's going to be using this as a training.
Correct. Right. He's certainly planning on a learning, a thing or two, from Davy Resource Group staff. He's been in communication with several of their staff members at different events and workshops as it is, and he's a new arborist, still learning things, and as I said, planning to learn. But that's the good thing about this group is that they're very willing to work with our staff, and in the tree management plan, as I said, they'll be presenting or giving us that information in Excel files and certain types of tree inventory files that he can then use in the future. They'll also work with him in understanding how to interpret that information.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Giffens. And I will note, just for the record, that, that this is a matching grant, so there's, it's a 50-50 split, so $10,000 is coming from the Parks Fund and $10,000 from the forestry grant itself. And, and when trees are removed, is there a plan to mitigate, in other words, to replenish elsewhere the same number or more?
That's where the, the management plan will come into play. Again, we'll work with Davy and heed to their recommendation on when a tree is removed, what we need to be doing in order to mitigate that.
Right. And, and clearly, there are some better species than others right now, and that changes as the climate changes, of course, so I'm sure they're going to be giving you information on that. So it sounds like a great project. We appreciate it being pursued because it is a matter of safety. I want people to enjoy our trails safely, so is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on the Davy Resource Group agreement regarding Community and Urban Forestry Assistance Grant?
I will. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Oh, yes. Sorry, was it loud enough?
Oh, that's okay. So, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw the nod again in here. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. We appreciate it. So we've had some fun with audio today, haven't we? So with that, we don't have any appointments today. I do have some announcements. Just a reminder to everybody that county buildings are open by appointment only, so please contact the department you wish to visit. Face coverings are required, so, and they can be provided for you, just let them know. Also, we have signage available for businesses. It's a window claim, it's smaller than this, but this is the size I printed, and that is available to any business or not-for-profit. And the Downtown Bloomington Inc. is carrying them, as well as the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and also available at the courthouse north door. The great Dina Delauter Myers is handing them out 9:00 to 4:00, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, or you can contact our office directly. Also available at those, at the north door, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, in addition to the many places that are listed on our website, you can also get free face masks or face shields from Ms. Delauter Myers at the courthouse north door, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 9:00 to 4:00. We do want to take a moment to thank everyone in the community who has been wearing their face coverings, because it is a sign that the "we" is more important than the "me", and that's, and that's a great thing to see, and it helps support our local businesses and all the many people who are employed in our community. Just a reminder to folks, as unfortunately, at the federal level, we're missing some leadership. We do have the issue of evictions, utility shut-offs pending for a lot of folks in our community, and we worked with the council, we're very proud to have teamed up with the council and the township trustees to create an assistance fund. So if you're having trouble paying your utility bills or your rents or other payments that you have, please contact your township trustee. Every resident in the county has a township trustee, so please contact them, and they're there to help you. And there are a lot of different resources, but we do have a Township Assistance Fund in place to help folks out in the time of need. We also have, we're really proud to have on our website at co-monroe.in.us CARES funding form, and this is for businesses or social services, not-for-profits in our community to fill out, to help, we will help you with some CARES money to help you cover some non-payroll expenses that were related specifically to the pandemic, some expenses that you had not anticipated before the pandemic started, things like masks, gloves, Plexiglas, things like that, as long as it has not been paid through another means, for example, our food and beverage grants. So if you have some outstanding expenses and you're a not-for-profit social service or business in the community, please go to that form, fill it out, send in your receipts, and we will do our best to get you reimbursed. With that, do my colleagues have anything else to add for our announcements today? No, I don't. Penny Giffens?
No, I had made a note to remind people about the township trustees, so I'm glad that you said something about that.
Absolutely. We're so proud to be doing that. We're way ahead of anybody else locally doing that, so I'm so glad, glad and grateful for the work of the township trustees and the council who make this happen. So it's a great thing we're doing, and we've been way ahead on a lot of these things. So very proud of us and very proud of Monroe County Government in general for the way that we've responded to this horrible circumstance. Without anything else, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.